Welcome and good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, considering how windy it is tonight and cold. So the BUSD Board of Education meeting is called to order at 4:02 PM in open session. Public comments, closed session items. Tonight, we have requests addressing closed session agenda items. Ms. Linda Atkins-Arn, BTA president, would you please approach the podium? Thank you.
Hi, thank you, President Garza, School Board. Thank you with our administration, our superintendent. Can't call you new anymore. You've been through several battles already. So I actually just wanted to talk about appreciation and appreciating not having to drag something out. This is too loud, I'm sorry. To not drag something out so long that we almost get to the point of wondering what was our point in the first place. You know, often we've had event, we've had bargaining things that have taken nine months, 10 months. We have gone, we've been out of a contract a while, we've done different things. But in talking to a friend, I'm reminded how many decades worth of this experience I've had. And it feels like at last, there's leadership happening. There's a lot of discussions happening on both sides. There's a lot of knowledge being shared. It's not just this knowledge belongs to me and I'll tell you what to think. Or I'll tell, you don't have to worry about asking questions because, you know, so and so takes care of it. I think that the power in freeing up the information alone is a giant switch. And from BTA, you know that we've, we have ratified the agreements. We had 460-plus people vote. We, as members, we have 519. That's gigantic. We had people, we're trying to do it all online, so we're having some battles over whether you could get certain web, or certain emails in. So we'll, we'll work on that the next time. But good days are coming. It's nice. We appreciate that. And again, better together, better not arguing. And it is, you know, working on putting us in the middle of BUSD. So sincerely, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Arn. Next, we have Dr. Kirsten Robinson, closed session item as well. Please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Board and Superintendent. And I want to reiterate what I said last time. Thank you, inspirational Board and Superintendent. This decision that happened, this elevation of salaries for the teachers, I want to give it a label, a different label than it's been perceived in the past. This decision really demonstrated that this Board prioritizes the resources over people. You know, capital and human will are both really important, but this decision really actually conveys that we have a leaning toward the people. And that hasn't happened in the past. Every time we've had negotiations, what it's essentially been is a tug-of-war. We're over here, you're over there, and we fight. And really, essentially, in that kind of fight, somebody loses. And when any of us lose, when either of us lose, we all lose. And this time, it's actually looked like, how do we win? How do we all win in this economy? Essentially, this is the first time when we've really looked at this as a strategic, as a strategic maneuver. Not how do we hold on to resources so we can get people to do what needs to be done? Essentially, we've had what you need, you have what we want. When you give us more of what we want, we'll make sure you get what you need. Otherwise, maybe we can't quite give that. Even though nobody overtly says that, two things have to happen in this economy. First of all, you have to validate people. That's really the most important thing. If people don't feel valued, I don't care how much money you throw at them. They don't feel valued, they don't stay. But second of all, you do actually have to compensate them. And you didn't have enough time after decades of not valuing people. And I don't mean any personal person isn't valuing people. But you have a system where people don't feel valued. And when that's happened for decades, you don't have, he doesn't have time. You don't have time to make people feel valued enough to get us to move in the direction we need to move as abruptly as we need to do to get the change we need, to get our district where it needs to be. So really, this act of compensation, it was a really courageous act. Because I heard people say, they're going to hate your school board and your superintendent. Everybody's going, everybody outside is going to hate them because of what they did. No, everybody's going to love them because this is the first time where you really look at, who are we? What's our mission and how do we move it forward? Not, these are our resources and we have to hang on to them. One of the things that I wanted to really bring to mind is essentially that we're going to have problems. Success doesn't mean we don't have problems, but we should level up our problems. We should have better problems than we've had in the past. We shouldn't be down here. For a long time, this district's ceiling has been everybody else's floor. What is legal? What can we essentially get away with legally? What won't we get in trouble for legally? That has been where we have hovered, and it needs to stop. We need to move into what's ethical and moral. We're raising human beings who are going to take over the world. And this district has an important priority to make sure that their education is of paramount importance to us, not the money to get them educated. You spend this year's money on this year's children, not on their great-grandchildren. Christopher, I have to tell you how much I admire how you've shown up and come to the table. You don't have a vote here. So really, why would you even want to have a voice? But you do. And because you have consistently delivered that in this room, it's opened the door, not only for us to come up to have the courage to do it, but for the kids behind you who see the sample, the model that you've had. You've been a pioneer. And how you've embraced him, not to see him as, you know, he's essentially over there representing the kids. They, they fought for this voice, and you've heard it. So what I want to say to you before I go is be the leaders you want to follow. Be the leaders you want to follow. We deserve that, and you can be that.
While meetings, I'm sorry. At this time, the Board will recess to closed session. Open session will resume at approximately 6:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. At this time, tonight's meeting of the Board of Education was called to order at 4:02 in open session. And the Board then adjourned to closed session at 4:08. We will now reconvene the meeting in open session at 6:00. Topics discussed in closed session were pending litigation, labor negotiations. No action was taken. Replacement pages for agenda items 9.2.5.2 and 10.3 are on the back table. Public comments and agenda, non-agenda items. Tonight, we have requests addressing agenda and non-agenda items. While meetings of the governing board are not public meetings, they are open to the public. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the Board on each agenda or non-agenda item. And the Board will limit the total time for public input on each to 21 minutes as per Board bylaw 9322.2. Could I please have Mrs. Tanya White Leather to the stand, to the podium, please?
Good evening. Madam President, members of the Board. My name is Tanya White Leather. I'm an attorney who represents students in special education. I have had of the 15 cases that were cited by the state of California, four of those were mine for the same student. I know this was long before this Board was here. And I realize, and, and those of us in the community welcome the changes that we are seeing and hope that things, as we, we see, are getting much better around here. So what I had sent, I brought extra copies. Of the cases I had, prior counsel had proceeded to try to go to the Supreme Court and lost every step of the way. The fees that my office incurred and then we got paid for were substantial. Number two is pending before the District Court. It's not been settled, but we're waiting for the court to order the fees. Number three is still pending the appeal by, by the district. And number four was a win back in November of '21 that, for my same student, that we have not yet been paid for. I had sent the billing out in, I believe, November to the prior Board, and I sent a copy. And I do have copies here. I would like to give these to, to the Board. And, and that explains the billing that we've had, that I presented to the Board. I, I have an option. If we don't resolve this through settlement with the Board, then I have to proceed to the District Court and file. Filing is going to add additional fees on. And I know that, that the district is trying to do all the right things. I always believe in avoiding litigation if possible. Again, I'm a teacher. I proudly keep my credential, and I last taught in LA Unified. I, I believe that money is better spent on your teachers and your programs and your special ed students. So that is a list of my, my bills that I presented. We're entitled to pre-judgment interest, which I'm willing to waive. If we can settle this and get this done so I don't have to go proceed, we don't have to have litigation, and you can get me out of your hair. So thank you so much for letting me present to you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. White Leather. So amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Yes. Agenda item 9.1.1 on February 9, 2023, meeting minutes on page one under Dr. Robinson's public comments. On her first line, it should, it should state that the new superintendent fosters creative conflict. Fosters creative conflict. So that's the only change that we have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve amendments to the agenda?
Make a motion.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Let's go on to the flag salute. Principal from Thomas Jefferson, Ms. Anita Chatterjee will be leading us in the flag salute this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm honored to conduct the flag salute. Please rise and face the flag. Please put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Ms. Chatterjee will also be giving us our inspirational speech, so don't leave just yet.
I knew that. Good evening, everyone. My greetings to Board President Ms. Myra Garza, Vice President Mr. Brad Critchfield, Board Clerk Ms. Amy Stewart, Members Dr. Sue Alhessen, and Ms. Renita Armstrong. A special hello to Student Board Member Christopher Mendoza, Superintendent Dr. Ben Drati, and Members of the Cabinet. My inspirational message today is for students, teachers, and fellow administrators. In the last few years, many of us have faced a multitude of adversities. Yet we are standing here today, carrying ourselves forth to tomorrow with strength, resilience, and fearlessness. I want to inspire you to continue to have courage. Stand up for what is right. Stand up against what is wrong. Do not be afraid to ask questions and do not be afraid to take assistance. Have courage to challenge the systems that deny you the platform to be successful. Have courage to continue doing the hard work to succeed. Have courage to take moments to rest and refuel yourself. Have courage to address difficult conversations, difficult but crucial. Have courage to be a change agent. You are a key member of the educational community. Have courage to do whatever it takes to respond with an equity and growth mindset. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chatterjee. We do not have recognitions tonight. Presentations from students, staff, and community. Do we have any presentations this evening, Dr. Drati?
Yes, I'll be, I'll be turning this over to a doctor, Avila, to brief, with a brief presentation on. Oh, sorry. We forgot for her to do bulletin board, so we got first.
I'm so sorry. Clearly, I'm new to this.
Me too. So, so am I.
Thank you all for being patient with me. I have the pleasure to present the Thomas Jefferson Bulletin Board tonight, TJ Shows Initiative. Our kinder through second-grade classrooms have been working with district TOSSes to implement the Word Study Program. With the assistance from District's Department for Instructional Support and Improvement, our teachers are well on their way to helping our youngest students attain phonemic awareness and fluency. High Reliability Schools is a Bellflower initiative aimed at creating highly effective schools that promote learning, promote students' learning, sorry. Marzano's vision helps schools like ours become cognizant of the frameworks and strategies that are already in place and can be made optimally effective. Part of this implementation is the PLC process. At Thomas Jefferson, we are using our PLC conversations to align the Common Core state standards with our instruction and promote the use of common assessments, grading, and reporting systems. We are thankful for the collaborative work of our hard-working teachers, TOSSes, and the instructional specialists. TJ is lucky to have two stellar counselors, Ms. M. and Ms. C., who take care of all things SEL and college and career. Our counselors do presentations for students and staff. They do assemblies to create awareness about bullying and kindness. They provide social-emotional learning lessons to students and support our teachers by doing demo lessons in their classrooms. We hope to continue working towards the success of our students and teachers with these initiatives and more. Thank you for letting me share what we do on our campus. I hope you have a wonderful evening, and I swear this is the last you'll see of me.
Well, I hope not.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chatterjee. So now we will go on to our presentations.
Great. At this time, I'll be turning the meeting over to Dr. Avila for a brief presentation on the status of school safety plans in the district.
Well, good evening, Board. Board President Garza, Vice President Critchfield, Board Clerk Stewart, Board of Members, Dr. Alhessen, Ms. Armstrong, and Student Board Member Chris Mendoza and the audience. Tonight, I'll be just giving a brief overview about our comprehensive school safety plans, also some awareness of our safety drills, some highlights, and also some recommendations from future work. So background in this particular area. Each year, the schools go through a process to update and review their comprehensive school safety plans, which identifies appropriate safety strategies and procedures. District staff provides our school administrators with a comprehensive school checklist, which helps the administration go through a process which really review ed code requirements per each section of the comprehensive school safety plans. For the Board's awareness, some of these requirements include legal mandates, components of the plan such as who's part of the safety committee, school profiles, maps, child abuse reporting procedures, disaster procedures, teacher notifications, policies regarding discrimination, sexual harassment, hate crimes, dress code, school discipline, and emergency response procedures and maps. Those are some of the elements that you will find in the comprehensive school safety plans. Ed code requires that school districts take to their Boards of Education by March 1st the recommendation to approve our comprehensive school plans. So each year around this time, we'll be coming before the Board with updates and requesting the Board's approval on the comprehensive school safety plans. Prior to being put forth before the Board, it goes through review process and approval at the school site. In addition to that, we also work with our local law enforcement to review and approve the plan. Our fire department and also district staff have an opportunity to review the plans before they go to the Board for consideration and approval. For the Board's awareness, these plans are kept at the school sites along with a copy at the district office. While these plans are available to be viewed, we do keep them secured because of the sensitivity around the content in the plans in regards to contact information for staff, evacuation routes, just overall response procedures. We want to just make sure that's secured for safety purposes. In addition to that, as I mentioned, each, each year, school administration will review and update and this process, and ultimately, just to make sure that we're constantly reflecting and reviewing our processes and procedures. And that's the background regarding the comprehensive school safety plans. And in addition to that, I'll be going over a few additional informations regarding safety as a general. In addition to that, our schools hold safety drills throughout the year. Some of these drills include earthquake, what includes the drop, cover, and hold, evacuations, fire drill, and lockdown. Every time a school will hold a drill, they will complete a drill evaluation form. And that form is sent to the, the maintenance department along with ed services so we can also review to make sure these drills are being completed. We do participate in the California Great Shakeout yearly. Here are some images that, from some of the pictures from some of our school sites along with district office. So I want to, we want to be able to highlight some of our strengths. Like, as I mentioned, each year, we do go through a process to update our comprehensive school safety plans. We do have safety protocols. I mean, as, as seen in the picture prior, we did conduct a, participate in the California Great Shakeout. We did a full duck cover and hold. We did a full evacuation. We swept of all the classrooms, and even here in participating here at the district office. We did activate our emergency response procedures in which we conducted a radio check from each school to the district office to make sure every school campus was cleared. We did have an opportunity to test all of our communication systems. And so that's something that is a strength. So in the event of a disaster, we have those response procedures in place. Since he is in the audience, I just would like to acknowledge Mr. Buffington's involvement in that because he does play a critical role in our communication system and the safety emergency. In regards to that, we also have gone through the process to installing UPA systems in our classrooms. Mayfair is one school that we're still working through regarding construction. So it gives us the opportunity to make notifications to the classrooms in the event of an emergency. We have security cameras at all of our school sites. We also have emergency bins that contain our supply, emergency supply procedures. And each year, our principals will work with our custodians to make sure those supplies are kept current and are replaced as needed. As I mentioned earlier, we do have school radios so they can be able to communicate with the district office in the event of an emergency. And anytime schools require updates to those, they would work with the maintenance office to make those requests. And we also have strong collaboration with our local authorities, being able to work with law enforcement and our fire departments. They were just here last week in regards to providing us updates and being able to collaborate and strengthen the partnership there. And so we do appreciate our partnership with the fire department and local law enforcement, and especially as they come in and also review all of our plans, too. So these are some of our safety strengths that we've identified. And as we continue to improve, we will continue to identify other additional strengths. We also want to be able to share some recommendations for future work in the future. So based on our ongoing evaluation, based on our input from school site administration, we've identified some areas in which we want to be able to provide some additional support. For example, we want to be able to continue to strengthen our, our processes and procedures in preparation in the event there's ever an active shooter process occurring at a school site. We have training that's given to all of our administrators at the beginning of the year. But based on feedback, we want to be able to provide that to each school site with, working with our partners with Alec, a San Diego Sheriff Department, specifically Lakewood Sheriff Station. On the Board agenda tonight, there is a request for revision to the, the contract matrix to be able to increase the scope of services and the dollar amount with the LA County Sheriff Station to be able to offer these active shooter trainings at each of our school sites. So that's where a sheriff deputy will come in to facilitate that training. And he, and then our school administration can provide our staff with updates regarding our response procedures in the event of an active shooter. So this is an area that we want to continue to prepare and support with the hopes never to be used, but we want to be prepared and making sure that our schools and staff know how to respond to these types of incidences.
Is that the only scope of work that they're going to be?
So they would be, the, the primary focus would be the facilitation of the active shooter trainings for our school staff. But as part of that process, they may be able to also participate and walk, walk around the campuses with our principals to, to possibly offer some recommendations for, for other things to consider on the campus, other safety measures. And that will be the, the scope at this particular moment.
So I had recommended previously that we have a parent and like community relations as well as district staff involved with the Sheriff's Department as education and awareness for parents also. So would that be able to?
Yes.
Be inclusive of that? Because I think that's important, building of trust and communication between the community.
Absolutely. And so given what's happened in, in the country the last five, 10 years, even this year, with all the stuff that happened and involved, you know, that, in, in all communities, there, there's going to be a, a lack of understanding or frustration or just confusion about what, what the police is supposed to do versus what the district staff does and all that. So with that, there's often questions being asked. And our current arrangement with the local authorities is that even though they work great with us, we don't really have a dedicated person that we can call in any whim to say, let's have a conversation, let's talk to parents, let's come to a board meeting like this. They respond well, but it's more or less like, we call dispatch and they give us whoever, right? So we're going to expand on that for more trainings. But where, I think what I told Dr. Avila and the rest of the cabinet is, I would love to be able to have a dedicated officer that is, not that they will be parked in one of our schools, but for, to be our direct person that we can communicate and have conversations with and then provide the education and conversation that we need to have with parents and things like that, so.
Yeah, that wasn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them on our site. We've had issues with that in the past.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's why we stopped it as, as a board.
Yeah.
Previously. But I did think it was important to have an open line of communication and building of trust with law enforcement.
Yeah. So that's, that's, so that's the intent of that bullet, sub-bullet you see up there for future considerations.
In addition to that, I know as we get to the bottom, we recognize that we do need to engage our parents in the conversation regarding our safety protocols, what are our response procedures? And I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit more. But we also, as part of our school sites, when they have their safety meetings, it is open to the school public, and they can come in and attend and provide input, too. So we do work in a process of engaging our, our state, our educational partners as part of that process because ultimately, we want to make sure we're taking other thoughts into consideration to ensure that we are providing a safe and secure environment for our students and staff.
Thank you.
In addition to that, all of, as you see in our comprehensive school safety plan, they use a structure what's referred to as incident command system. And it lays out an incident commander and different roles and responsibilities in the event of a, an emergency response. We want to be able to provide ongoing staff training to our administration so they can feel comfortable utilizing that response procedure. They have awareness, but we want to continue to provide refreshing trainings and making sure staff feels comfortable to be able to respond to that. I did provide a definition for what incident command training consists of, but it's really the, the organization of how to respond and being able to activate that at the district level and at the school sites in the event of an emergency that we will need to take in those types of steps. In addition to that, we want to be able to research the following items for future consideration. Looking at the possibility of bringing in a point-of-entry system. We want to be able to look into the visitor management, an electronic visitor management system. Creating a standardized response for locking doors across the district in, in the event of an emergency. We have, schools have different products at their school sites. And, and we want to make a, have a consistent practice across the district of what is our standardized procedure for that. And just to give maybe some more clarity on that, some schools will have the lock, the, the sliding lock things, some box. Some of them have the handles on the doors, that, on the doorknobs, and some schools don't have either one. And so we want to be able to identify what is the appropriate, which is the recommended tool? I'm drawing a blank on that. Which one's the appropriate product to be able to purchase? And seeing what's going to be the, the best way to quickly lock doors in the event of an emergency. So we are going to be investigating that to standardize that across the district. And we also want to look at the possibility of digitizing our emergency response system. A lot of it is all paper-based. We want to be able to offer different types of forms of using that and having it available digital also. So sometimes, I remember in the classroom, some schools may have the flip charts, some just have a paper on the wall. Well, Well, some people may need to be able to have electronically. Because in emergency, you may not have that available to you. So you want, you want to make sure it's accessible so people know how to respond in the event of an emergency. So what we're trying to do is really make things very simplified and making sure it's, it's digital so people can access it and at a moment's notice. In addition is we want to also engage our parents in this discussions. We want to make sure they're aware of our safety protocols and response procedures. We want to make sure that the parents are also aware of sometimes we have to also do what's referred to as student threat assessments. Whenever there's a danger to them, a student's in danger to themselves or potentially a danger to the school community as a whole. And what is our response procedures? How do we work with the local authorities to do risk screenings for students? And then working with the local authorities of other action is needed to be taken. So those are things that we want to make sure our families are aware of.
Having, having that dedicated officer allows us to be able to deploy officers not just for patrolling purposes, but to go have conversations at school sites or parent meetings or things like that where we can just call and say, look, we need help on this situation. So as it is right now, it's hard to do that because they have, they have interest in a lot of other places. And obviously they do respond when we need them in an emergency case. But we're trying to talk about all the preventative stuff as well, which is education, education, education. And to have somebody dedicated that is a law enforcement. I think it just sounds better from, coming from them than from a superintendent or, or staff member. To talk about these safety issues though.
So we wanted just to make the board aware of some things that we're going to be looking to the future. And being able to just continuously evaluate our safety needs and making sure that, that we're taking all the different areas into consideration that are needed. And I just want to take this moment just to thank our school staff, our district staff for all their work to making sure that they're providing a safe learning environment for students and staff. And I know it's a team effort. And I just would like to thank everyone's involvement in helping contribute to a safe environment for our students and staff. That's it. Does board have any questions regarding this particular item?
Yeah, I do have a question. Within the recommendations for future steps and you know, this, your strengths and weakness, your strengths, you didn't mention any weaknesses. Are we also going to try to consider providing training to staff or making sure that we have like a trained personnel in case something should happen like an injury? I mean, you know, looking into the future, can we make sure that we have personnel, a nurse, an LBN or even training for the staff? I know a lot of teachers, they get CPR training and they, they know how to use the AED, that type of stuff. So in case, should something unfortunate happen in the future to where we really have a serious injury, there's going to need to be someone who knows how to do first aid on different wounds. So please consider that as we go into the future.
We, we will take that in consideration, but just also for the board's awareness, we do have staff at, at our school sites who have training on first aid and CPR. Our health assistants would have that knowledge. And we also have our district nurses who can also provide that support. So it goes back to our overall response procedures. But I hear also just how do we get more staff trained and, and provided that additional awareness? So everyone can feel comfortable in being able to respond to a student in need.
And I think that one of the biggest ahas, epiphanies for me as I've gone through these conversations with law enforcement and all that, and my, my growth in this area, it showed me that whatever we do, we have to make sure that, and then when an emergency occurs, that the site can survive by itself, even all night if it has to, right? Without, you get an earthquake, all of a sudden Bellflower is down, district office is down and parents can't get to the school site and all that. That site has to be able to survive with CPR trainings, with food, with being able to stay overnight and all those things, those are all a part of the idea when we train people, when we train parents that, that the sites will be independent, being able to operate independently. Obviously, if there's access to authorities, district office, and we will definitely jump in there. But we just have to make sure that the whole community understands, the site understands that in that case, the site has to be able to survive.
And that's my point exactly because I don't want to name a school, but there is a school that in the nurse's office, the person is not trained, is not even an LBN. So, so the person really does not even know how to take vitals properly in case there was like an emergency. So again, so now we're going to have to make sure that we have proper staffing. And I'm, I'm, I'm talking from experience. So we're going to have to make sure we have, I know we hired another district nurse, but we need to have at least a licensed vocational nurse at each site if we want to prepare for future next steps. And it would save us a lot of liability if we had someone, you know, should something happen in, in the future, I surely hope nothing happens, but I know for a fact, we have people that sitting in the nurse's office that doesn't have the credentials.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate all the work. I, I know we're talking a lot about crisis management, but as far as prevention goes, could you explain how the sites are staffed currently with security?
That's a, that can, in regards to, I think that would be pressed provided as part of a board Friday memo where we can give an overview at each school site. What is the current staffing in regards to the capacity, safety staff and security? And that's something we can provide more thoroughly so the board can have awareness of what the staffing looks like at each school site.
That'd be great. And one more question, can you explain, I know the, the contract before the board is for increasing for the active shooter drills. Can you explain the, the partnership currently with the Lakewood Sheriff's Station?
So on this one, I may have to ask Ms. Hogan because I know we use them for security at events.
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Critchfield. We use them during our graduations. They help to provide security support as well as some of our sporting events.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And so now the expansion will also be able to allow us to have them do the active shooter trainings and also do some walk-throughs with our site administration.
Okay. And actually, and Dr. Drati, I know you mentioned possibly creating a liaison for the district, which I think is a great idea, by the way. And is that something that we would be working in the near future to create that relationship?
Yes. Yeah, we actually did meet with the officer the last week. Yeah, last week and very informative, good person. And I just wish, okay, I wish you were dedicated towards us, not everybody else either. But my point is, the only way to do that is we'll have to pay for it. Because we're, we're going to be taking them out of the mix of the city. And, and, and they won't want it, the city probably won't, won't want that. But they, but if we give them money, they'll provide the officer.
But do we know if, because Lakewood serves four school districts, do we know if they have that similar arrangement with any of the other school districts? Do they have a liaison for any of the other ones? Did that come up?
That's something that we have to do research because I'm not sure which districts they have those established partnerships through an SRO or, or what have you. Because every school district may have a different model. But going back to maybe earlier part of your question, our current arrangement right now as if our school sites have a, a need for support from a local law enforcement, they would typically reach out to the Lakewood Sheriff's Station and then call dispatch and then dispatch would send a deputy to the school for further investigation depending on the incident.
Right. Thank you.
But in general, yes, there are arrangements like the district, I came from Santa Monica, Malibu. We had two dedicated officers that we, we, we helped pay for that just serviced our schools. Not that they were parked in our schools, but for everything else we got through, talking about education and communication with parents and awareness. And the times that we have to call somebody, if somebody made a threat at midnight and we don't know what to do about school in the morning, you know, so, so be able to call somebody at midnight and say, hey, can you look into this matter before we open the school? You know, those kind of things, having somebody dedicated towards us is, is very helpful.
I just had a comment. I want to agree with that as well. We use that strategy in the district that I teach in and we have one or two dedicated even just for our middle schools. And it's very helpful. So I applaud you guys for bringing that up. Thank you.
I think two, two questions for me. The first being, I remember in like my earliest experience here on the board, in July, I went to a CSVA training in Los Angeles. And there was a workshop that particularly mentioned the locking, the locking of doors. And no, yeah, there was a panel and there was some law enforcement official there. And he was saying that, you know, he wishes that every school district had all their doors locked all the time and classrooms always had it locked. And I remember thinking at the time that, you know, that could, that could really be a burden on, on, on teachers. Like if they're, you know, if a student needs to go use the bathroom, like they're going to have to get up and, you know, get them out and lock the door every single time. And so I just want, I guess it's more of a comment, but you know, while looking into things like the lock block, because I know pretty much all of my teachers always have the lock block on. It's, it's less of a hassle for them to, you know, have to get up and open the door for a student once, once they go to the bathroom. Moving forward, when we're looking at that system, let's also try to consider that, keep in mind that we don't want security to start to interfere with the learning environment. I mean, I mean, security, security comes first, safety comes first, but it's just, it's kind of a fine line to walk on. I guess, so this one's actually a question. When I was looking through the school safety plans, I noticed that there were a lot of portions that were kind of, they were blank. So in the index, there's things listed that do not have plans attached to them. In particular, something I, I noticed was plans for unlawful demonstrations or walkouts. So I looked at most of our, you know, populated high school campuses. So I looked at Mayfair and Bellflower and Somerset. So I looked at their pages, Somerset's was page sixty-four and Mayfair's was page seventy-two and Bellflower's was page sixty-four, but none of them had plans attached. And I thought that was tricky because I know for sure last year at Mayfair, we had a walkout. That's, this is when the whole, you know, principal controversy happened and our students had a walkout. And so there not being a plan attached to that raises some concerns for me because if in the event, you know, students feel, you know, galvanized and to, you know, you know, protest a certain issue going out of their school with his dress code or whatever, and they have a walkout, I don't know, I may, maybe I'm thinking more of an enforcement, you know, like discipline issue. But is there a particular reason why some of these portions of the safety plans are blank in particularly this?
So I would have to look into that, but I know when we, I've experienced that in the past. What we do is we activate our emergency response procedures and then make sure we have a unified response across the, the secondary campuses. Meaning we'll work with, talk to principals. This is going to be our plan of how do we engage students in conversation to give them alternative ways to, because I remember in this, having dealt with this in my past, we would organize events for students to be able to have a voice, to be able to advocate instead of walking out and leaving the campus where it could be unsafe for them. So, but then once we do that, we would then also engage in those conversations. But then we would create a process for how to support students with that and making sure that we share with students the potential harmful impacts if they do walk out. But in regards to the safety plans, I would have to look a little bit more in that because I have to just verify something on that piece before and then provide more information.
Yeah, it's just because when I looked at them, there were a lot of portions that were blank and it had like a title and there was nothing under it. And so that's why I figured like, does that plan exist? Or is that like, that, you know, absence of a plan mean that it's up to the individual site? Or I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe, maybe I had like an abridged version of it, but I just noticed that there were gaps in that.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you for this marvelous presentation. One question, I, that was the same thing I was going to ask for. Thank you so much. I remember. So number one is how are we gathering the information from parents? Is it through a survey? How are we giving them access to give us information back on this process?
How we would go through that is through our school site safety committees. They would inform the parents that we, as part of their school site council agendas that they pushed out to their community. They would notify them that on this particular date, we will be talking about this conference of school safety plan for allowing the opportunity to attend these meetings and to also provide input.
So these, these are, I'm assuming emails that go out to parents based on their lists?
So that would be as how they would normally notify their community regarding whenever they have a school safety meeting. They would usually use the normal communication that they would have, whether that's through blackboard or what have you, to be able to send out that, you know, we have an upcoming school site council meeting. One of the items being discussed is our comprehensive school safety plan. And being able to, if they choose to, want to attend, then they would come in and be able to provide input and share any thoughts or concerns to be considered as part of the school safety development.
Do you know, and you may not have the numbers right now, so we can get these numbers perhaps later. Do you know what the percentage of parents are who have responded or who have attended these meetings?
I can inquire with their schools to get a better number to be able to provide that, the board with awareness.
Perfect. Thank you. That would be great. And then also, are there several days, nights that are offered for parents to participate? Or is it just one?
It would be the typical one night or one, one meeting that is available.
Okay. Just food for thought, maybe we can offer some different types of, you know, ways to give that input and maybe several different days and hours perhaps? So that way we can capture a larger, you know, perhaps focus of parents.
How we can engage more parents in the discussion.
Yes, absolutely. That would be wonderful. Is this, are these informational emails going out in different languages or is it just in one?
Well, we would do our, whenever we do notifications, we would comply with requirements to, to translate it in, in Spanish and what have you. So we would use our normal communication, however we communicate in regards to announcements at their school sites. When we send information across the district, we always push the information out in the, in the language that's most common in our particular community would be Spanish. But we do notify people in the, in the, yeah, so we do notify them. And this PowerPoint is also translated in Spanish, so it'll go out in the BSD news, the, the English and Spanish version.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I, I do want to say as a parent, I do get notices and I do get them in English and Spanish.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So the next, do we have any public hearings this evening?
No public hearings.
Thank you. So let's go ahead, go to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve agenda item nine point one point one, approval of minutes, February ninth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting as corrected?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Let's move on to the consent agenda. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and withhold agenda item nine point two point one point one and nine point two point one point two. Do I have a second to approve the consent agenda?
I wanted to pull off some item nine point two point five point two.
Can, can you please state that number again?
Yes, excuse me, nine point two point five point two.
Nine point two point five point two. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let me rephrase that motion. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and withhold agenda items nine point two point one point one and nine point two point one point two and nine point two point five point two. Thank you. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Withheld items, the next item of business are the items that have been withheld from the consent agenda. The first agenda item withheld tonight is agenda item nine point two point one point one, the calendar board of education meeting dates. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yeah, that one, that one, we held off. I made a decision to, just because of the calendar and having to come back and forth every week to change the calendar. and having to come back and forth every week to change the calendar, I'd rather get it all cleaned up and then bring it one last time. So, you guys provided me your input already. We're also checking with district staff to see if everything is, is, is what it is. So we're almost ninety percent there. So I'd rather, I'd rather bring back the next time around for approval instead of this time.
Could I ask, uh, I know we're not gonna approve the entire calendar, but are the, are we at least in agreement for the next few?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I think it's for the, just the other ones, I wanna make sure that we're, we're on the same page on.
Okay, so just, uh, just to be clear that the March ninth and March twenty-third, with, those are, those are okay as of right now? Yeah.
Yeah, that, that one's good, those ones are good.
Yeah, how about April sixth?
Not yet.
Okay, okay, great.
On that April, on that April. On April sixth, I asked, uh, a month ago, um, that this was a conflict. And when I, when I seen it on the agenda, I didn't know whether it was being ignored or not.
No.
As, as it is now, uh, you know, I know you say you're gonna be working on it, but then I was told that, uh, if I can't make it, I just can't make it.
Yes.
And, um, which means if that's the case for that, it should be the case for all of them.
Say it again now?
I was told that we were gonna continue, we were gonna have that meeting on the sixth.
Yeah.
And, um, even with the notice before we had to do the double dates, this was before we had to do the double dates.
Yes.
And so I, I understand that sometimes the calendar is, is a conflict because there's so many people.
Yes.
But if, if, if I was, um, asked to just go ahead and be excused from that meeting, um, it should go across the board.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement. So that's why I haven't dealt with that date yet.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm just looking at all of them and then I'm gonna come back with a final proposal. So I haven't forgotten you about your comment or I think all of you turned in something. So hence the reason why I'm not including it today. Because I got, I gotta, I gotta do some work, internal work with you guys one-on-one and then do have a final one before.
Sounds great, sounds great, thank you.
Thank you. So if I'm hearing correctly, what we're going to be doing is to table it to the next meeting. Thank you. Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
The next agenda item withheld tonight is agenda item nine point two point one point two, two thousand twenty-three, selection of members to the California School Board Association Delegate Assembly. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments?
Um, I, I just wanted to know, could, since there are six openings, could we just, uh, forego the, um, the ballot?
I'd be in favor of that.
Agreed.
All right. Can you explain forego the ballot to me?
Um, what's the other word? What's the other phrase?
No, no.
Um.
To just approve the?
Help me out, Linda.
To approve this?
I think just because there, there's six spots and we'd be approving.
Waive the ballot.
Yeah.
So we would not vote individually?
Individu-, there's six spots, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but if someone wanted to vote individually, no for someone, could we do that with that process?
No.
No, we wouldn't be able to.
So then I ask that we vote individually if possible?
Sure.
If we don't have the information on that candidate. Cause my understanding, if I'm correct, that they provided their, a brief bio. So if there's not one on, on their list, then did we receive their bio? Is there someone in particular that you wanted to, um?
There's one in particular that I would like to vote no on, yes.
Oh, to vote no on instead of adding, okay, I, okay.
So, um, when do we have to give these, um, these, uh, our decisions? Is there a date? So could we have those attachments please and we will go ahead and continue?
We already, we already received the, the attachments. So the thing is, as a board, we submit one ballot. We don't submit six, uh, five, five ballots. So even if you were to vote no on one person, uh, if,
If the rest of the board?
Everybody else is gonna say yes, then it, then they're going to get that vote. And being that it's six openings and six candidates, I ask that we waive the ballot because no matter what, even the other districts that's voting, it's six spots.
Yeah, I would just make a motion to approve the, the six.
So the point of order, if I want to vote for one and we're approving all six and I don't wanna approve that one, then I would have to vote no on all six of these?
No, 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 no.
So, so, obviously, there, there, there are gonna be times where there's, somebody needs to recuse themselves or, uh, they have a issue or, you know, whatever, whatever it is, uh, uh, the, the, the best way to address, and if we know it's gonna pass because of what Dr. and Mrs. Armstrong mentioned, then if that person wants to make it a point to say, I'm not gonna vote for this person, that, that, I imagine that's the reason why you wanna do it. You knew that it was gonna pass, but you want a person to say, I don't want to vote.
Correct. You can abstain from the vote.
I don't wanna abstain though, I wanna vote no.
Okay.
Then, then we would have to go through each one then.
And, and we could probably vote in, um.
Well, can't we just say, um, the one, okay, if it's per- correct, correct me if I'm wrong. Can we just say, um, acceptance of, there are, uh, current with omission of whoever you're omitting?
Couldn't we just do a roll call down the line and just do it like that? Can we do that?
Yep. Just go one, just go one by one.
Yes, please.
Second.
I'll second, I'll third it.
Let's take roll call please.
Mr. Mendoza?
I think I've gotta abstain because I didn't have enough time to look over these candidates, so I'll just abstain.
Ms. Armstrong?
Okay, we need to be clear on the motion.
So I would, I would, I think the motion to, uh, vote on each candidate individually and we'll just go through them like that? That's okay?
So we're now voting on Christina Kennedy?
Right.
Or Christine Kennedy?
So motion to approve blank and then you go from there.
So I'd, I'd make a motion to approve, where'd the list go? Uh, make a motion to approve Christine Chacon Kennedy.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Abstain.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh,
Yes, ma'am?
Yesenia, uh.
Correnta.
Correnta, nice.
Roll call please.
Oh.
Need second.
I second.
Mr. Mendoza?
Abstain.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
No.
Mr. Crichfield?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Garza?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Francisco Santana.
Second.
Mr. Mendoza?
Abstain.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, um, vote for friends, uh, Hector, Hector Junior, Sylvia Masias and Ernie Nishi.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Abstain.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Wonderful. So, the next item withheld tonight is, agenda item nine point two point five point two.
Do you make a motion?
Um, no, it's the amendment to the annual listings, multi-year contract and agreements, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So on.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, on the Atkins, Edelson, Loyah, uh, Lola, Loyah, Root and Romo?
And Runo, yes.
Romo, um, is this one of the, um, firms that submitted?
Yes.
And that's what I want to talk about is my understanding on the subcommittee that both me and my colleague Brad Crichfield are on, is that we're going to complete the interviews before we bring it to the board for final vote. So I didn't understand why we have one now.
Got it. Maybe, maybe, yeah, maybe I was confused or maybe I didn't clarify the last time we had the interviews. Just to let you know for the rest of the board, uh, we have a, uh, subcommittee that you guys, uh, we selected, which involves, uh, Mr. Chris, uh, Chris Field and, uh, Dr. Sue Alhessen, uh, joined me in interviewing the different RFPs of legal firms that were, uh, uh, that, that submitted. So there's several of them, but we're, we wanna bring back about four of them because I think it's good to have di- different firms that you work with. Uh, I'm accustomed to working in several of them and, uh, in, in different places I've been. Uh, obviously, this is not Santa Monica, Malibu. We have fourteen, we had a bunch of them there. We're not gonna have, we're not gonna need that many in this place, but you have, uh, multiple, uh, lawyers there. So I'm looking at a time issue. There's a bunch of legal issues that we gotta, uh, uh, address. I know to try to get, uh, our schedules organized enough to interview, uh, that many at once has been tough for us. So we've been kinda trickling in. So we interviewed them first. I think we all agree that they were good. There's two others we interviewed last week, but I wasn't able to get their contracts ready for this board meeting. It had to be kicked to the next one. And there's gonna be, uh, probably two other firms that we're gonna interview. Uh, so, but in order, I can wait till next time, but I'm just, I'm feeling insecure not having legal counsel available, uh, to us. So is, is why I wanted to at least bring this up.
My understanding is, um, current legal counsel's on board until we hire, until we have, um, other counsel available. Is that incorrect?
Uh, w- we can use them or not use them. We, I haven't accessed them much. Uh, I think they are, they are, uh, working with some of, uh, the previous, uh, issues that we've dealt with in small parks here and there. Uh, but our goal was to try to get, uh, um, new legal counsel in place right away.
Right.
Uh, so, so I guess my point is, I'm trying to get a new legal counsel in here and, and forego the, the previous one. And that was always the intent, so, um.
I just feel it's more ethical if we go through the entire RFP process. This kinda looks awkward if we're, if the other firms are seeing that we're already accepting one law firm and they're still haven't interviewed or they're planning to interview. Does that make sense?
Uh, it does. Uh, the ones that, the ones that we're interested in, the ones we agreed that would, that'll be a fa- a part of what I would bring, they've been communicated already, then they all know, the ones I've communicated know that, they're, they're not gonna be the only ones that we work with.
Okay.
Uh, so I've been very clear with them on that. We can certainly wait. I guess what I'm saying is as CEO, the place I am nervous not having.
So, um.
Counselor around, so.
I, I do wanna ask, do, do we have, we, we do have representation from CSBA until we, um, get, get who we want, you know, um.
We have options.
Hired.
Um, yes, well, we have a lot of cases like special ed cases and things like that. I don't know if CSBA is gonna come in and support with all of that. They normally support with general counsel stuff, but they won't get into all the special ed details and the stuff that we need, uh, so.
And when was the last one we hired? I can't remember the name.
We hired?
Well, we, we, we brought on another one.
Oh, she was part of the, their legal team as a whole, um, Alex Worthy? Is that who you're talking about?
No.
I don't know.
Feltnick?
Are you talking about from CSBA?
Our current, um, counsel that you guys have approved through the contract matrix is Mr. Eric Bathin and also Robert Floodhake. Those are the two current councils that you have in place and the CSBA, that is for board governance support, um, not for, um, anything pending in terms of like special ed or any cases like that.
So, uh, I will say just, uh, I, I, I shared some of the concerns, uh, but I also understand like the urgency with getting somebody on board. And we have been very, uh, clear with each, uh, firm that we're going to be hiring multiple, so I think there's that level of transparency. Uh, as a committee, what I would have hoped for and I think, uh, Dr. Alhessen shares, I would like to share with like the board our experience with the firms and like, so when we make our recommendations, it's not just like, it's on there. I wanna be able to talk about like which ones were good, why they were good, so. And I, it would be easier if we had all of them at once, so we can kinda say which ones, uh, we do prefer. Cause I, my understanding of the committee wasn't just, we would pick one. It would be, we would do the work and they have been long meetings and, and we've been putting in the work to do it. Uh, but, uh, this, this one in particular, I, I, I agree, I did like, um, and, uh.
Yeah, but I, I, I agree with, um, my colleague Brad Crichfield because I think we should bring it to our rest of our board members in closed session as a discussion of like what we saw, pros and cons, and maybe as a group, we would pick the top three or the top two or the top four.
It wouldn't come to closed session, it would be open session.
It would be open session conversation, yes.
Like in that spirit, I would say because to satisfy the needs of, of having counsel, I would say, using this moment to say, this is one that I would recommend, uh, in the meantime. And maybe for the following firms, we could make it more of a, a discussion with the board if that's okay.
Got it.
Yep. A good example is that this firm, um, when I, when we asked the question, what do you know about Bellflower? They fumbled and until we, I kind of coached them a little bit more about our district and what we are. So I'm saying it's, they were good. I'm not saying they weren't good, but there's certain things that other boards were much stronger on and they did do their research when they came to us. Brad, you might wanna mention things, but that made them stand out more. So I think that that's something that is an example of us talking about. If we want, um, to bring this now, I could, I could bring up some points that were positive and some things that I felt weren't, weren't not as strong.
Yes, um, could we do that please? That way we all kind of see what you saw and we go forward with more confidence.
It's something when we're doing as all of the RFPs that we're interviewing.
But I believe that the, um, the thought process here is that we need legal representation now. So hence why our superintendent brought this forward now. I agree with what you're saying. Um, but if we need it now, going forward, there might be some future litigation that, or anticipated litigation that we aren't necessarily seeing at this point, but now is the time to do this. So that way we are prepared and as a district, we can protect our students and any future decisions we may take.
Madam President, if I may, I, I, I totally agree and I feel comfortable with, with this firm right now. Um, but, and I, I like the, the, uh, where we're going with this as far as like we, we can use this firm, but, you know, we only use them when we use them, right? So if we are using them and we bring on, uh, one of the other firms, maybe we, we work with them more and maybe we don't use them as much, but it is nice and I think for you to have the, the comfort of having that, that representation, I think is very important. But I would again, make the, the request that moving forward with that, because I think we have a few, three or two or three more interviews. We've done two that aren't here. So we have about four total. I would like to present all those together and then I could bring, uh, the notes and, and you as well and present them to the board.
And that was in, in original intent is just, this take, this is taking much longer than, than I, I anticipated. So, uh, like I said, uh, knowing what's on the horizon, the possibilities of things coming our way, it's just to me, having that security is a, is a good thing and that's why I wanted it there.
Agreed and very good point. We could use them now, we don't have to. And if we find in the future that they are not, you know, what we assumed that they were going to do or be, then we can choose to not use them and go forward with someone else.
Yeah.
Could I make a motion that we, um, go ahead and approve this? Could I, uh?
I just wanna make sure everyone's clear that we do have legal representation now. It's not we don't have anybody available. I just want. It's not, we don't have anybody available. I just wanna make sure everybody knows that.
But I don't think anyone's in contact with him though. No one's in contact with current legal.
It's a matter of choice.
I, I've had limited contact with him. Um, uh, the, the times I have is to address a previous situation we just discussed in closed session, uh, and, and, and to me, that's the extent of my conversations. Um, right now, I've, in any legal decisions we're making and things like that, so far I've used, uh, we've used our knowledge on what's legal, not legal, without really having that lawyer there. Uh, so, so I guess my point is, uh, I, I just don't wanna walk around that way. I wanna be able to, um, have someone ready, uh, uh, when we need them.
Yeah, I, I understand you've worked with them in the past and you're comfortable with them. And that was one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure you were on board when we're going through this process is because you'd be one of the main, um, interfaces with them, but they do represent the board as a whole. When they come to the interview process, that's the first thing they say, is that we're here to represent the board.
Yes.
So I just wanna make sure everyone is aware of that.
Yeah, and, and, and we are using, uh, just to let you know, the current lawyers and their affiliates, we are using them for our current special educations also. Uh, it's not that we're not just completely using them, but the, the main person, uh, that with a general counsel that, that a superintendent would normally engage with. Like I said, I've had limited interaction and their interaction has to do with cases that we're sunsetting and closing. It's not that I'm just ignoring him, it's just, like I said, uh, normally I have more contact with, uh, legal counsel about things that are coming up. So far right now, I'm using my own knowledge on it, but I'd rather have that security with the, uh, with the, with the, having a lawyer around.
If I could throw one more thing, I know that there's a motion on for it. I did, because it does fall under the same agenda item. I know it's kind of a, a moment, a squirrel moment, but the Swag It Productions, I just wanna say, I did look into them and, uh, I, I wasn't as aware as, uh, the really amazing system that we have for streaming. And, uh, so I had to educate myself a little bit, so just kudos to the staff for getting that, um, in place, because I went on their website and like looked at all the features and it's actually pretty robust. And, uh, it's actually a lot better than a lot of other districts. Um, so that's something that, uh, we can celebrate ourselves for. And honestly, I, I would share the, check out the website and I'll share it with, uh, my colleagues as well. It's actually pretty cool, the entire system, so just kudos to the staff for that.
Thank you. Um, roll call, please.
So are we, the motion?
Sorry. Do we have a motion?
We need a second.
Motion. To approve?
We need to make a, a motion to, and this is only because they are at will. And I understand we need to be in a, a proper position, cause I, I've, I've researched some of these firms and not, uh, I probably need to do a little bit more, you know, but not face to face like you. So that's what I really need. So I make a motion that we approve this five point, uh, nine point, two point, five point two. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Elhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Thank you. So now going on to informational items, do we have any questions regarding the informational items this evening? Hearing none, um, board student staff member comments. It's time for staff comments. Uh, Dr. Drotti?
So I would like to, uh, to report that, uh, I would like to report that thanks to a leadership and cooperation of our principals, teachers and staff members across the district, the LA County Office of Education completed the mandate for the annual report findings of school visits and monitoring during the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year as it required, as required by the Williams Settlement Legislation. As a result, the legislation, um, as of, as resolved the legislation, the visits and monitoring focused three, uh, focuses on three key areas. Condition of facilities, sufficiency of textbooks and teacher assignments. The sites visited and reviewed were Ramona Elementary, Thomas Jefferson and Frank E. Woodruff Elementary. I'm pleased to share that due to the dedication of our maintenance, custodial staff and site leadership, uh, of Frank, uh, E. Woodruff, uh, Frank E. Woodruff received good and Thomas Jefferson and Ramona received exemplary status. All three sites had zero textbook insufficiency. All three sites had all teachers appropriately credentialed, authorized to instruct English learners. All three sites were verified to be accurate in the areas of textbook sufficiency and facilities data. In the area of uniform complaint procedures, all three sites had zero complaints in the areas of facilities, instruction, uh, instruction materials or teacher assignments. Uh, so this is something that in a yearly basis that we have to report out, uh, to the board. And this is, I wanted to take this opportunity to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Drotti. Um, it's time for Board of Education members and Student Board Member communications and reports. Let's begin with Mr. Mendoza.
Alright, so, good evening, Bellflower. I hope you all had a great long weekend and I hope everyone is staying warm with these high winds and the rain that's on its way. I'd like to begin my update with a few remarks on board business. So last month, I met with our superintendent, Dr. Ben Drotti, regarding a possible partnership between the Bellflower Unified School District and local public transportation agencies. This partnership would provide free, unlimited access to transit services for our students K through twelve via LA Metro's Go Pass program. The Go Pass program allows school districts to provide their students with passes that are valid for various transit agencies in the region, including LA Metro, Long Beach Transit, Norwalk Transit and other, uh, regional service providers. I approached Dr. Drotti about the program because I believe that our student body would benefit greatly from having additional options to travel to and from school, libraries and weekend club events. Public transit already helps our school community. Many students in Bellflower Unified use public transit, including Mayfair's class of twenty twenty-three valedictorian, who relies on city and city buses to get home. I know one student who had to move to Hawthorne during the pandemic and takes Metro Rail to get to school in the mornings. Public transit also helps club members get to weekend events. Our school buses are great for large class trips, but often are too expensive for service clubs to book in order to transport its members to beach cleanups or, uh, college tours. Lastly, bus lines like Long Beach Transit's ninety-one route and Metro's one twenty-eight carry dozens of students every day back and forth from Bellflower to Mayfair, alleviating some of the stressful traffic that builds up at drop off and pickup times. So Dr. Drotti is no stranger to these facts and, uh, he recalled during our meeting that Santa Monica, Malibu, um, was one of the dozens of greater Los Angeles area school districts that is able to offer these free passes to students that need them. In my conversation with him, I brought up a point I'd like to close this portion of my update with. These passes can save families large amounts of money that they can use for other academic expenses. Take my student tap card, for example. I use this card to get to my part-time job. With it, I receive discount, uh, discounted passes at a rate of twenty-four dollars per month. I've only been using my card for two months now, but my friend, who I've mentioned moved to Hawthorne during the pandemic, has been paying the same type of pass I do every month for two academic years. So that's over four hundred dollars, the equivalent of five California State, uh, University application fees. So I'm looking forward to hearing back from our administration about the feasibility of securing Go Passes for our students. I encourage you all to do some research into Metro's program at their website, www.metro.net. And before I move on to what projects I've been involved in and report some, uh, personal news, I'd like to take a moment to extend a congratulations to the Bellflower Teachers Association and BUSD negotiators for hammering out an agreement that better puts us on a track to be an exemplary school district in the region. Both parties worked tirelessly for months to try and find the numbers that worked best. And I'm delighted to know that the individuals who are most instrumental to student success are going to be better equipped to serve us in the years to come. So now for some personal news, starting with my homeschool. Today, students at Mayfair Middle School and High School, as well as at Lynsham Elementary, experienced an entire academic day without internet access. We believe that the high winds our region is experiencing right now are responsible for this outage. To the best of my knowledge, district staff is working with our fiber company to restore Wi-Fi to both campuses. Hopefully, our internet will be back before tomorrow night's the fair. And speaking of the fair, Mayfair High School's UNICEF Club will be selling snacks and refreshments to raise funds for our ongoing gravity water campaign. I must admit, I'm a little frightened about the progress of our campaign. We've only raised about four hundred dollars, with one hundred dollars being visible on the campaign donation website and three hundred dollars currently held in cash by our club president, uh, from PIN cells. So if you'd like to learn more about our campaign or donate, please swing by our booth tomorrow. My fellow club, uh, board members and I, as well as a few of our club members, uh, will be there to answer questions in the state cells. The last bit of Mayfair news I've got relates to our history club. So last Monday, the Bellflower City Council voted to approve our project to digitize and upload thousands of historical documents, photographs, maps and media onto a website that will be hyperlink to the city's webpage. The project is far bigger than just Mayfair, though. Um, History Club is partnering with Clifton M. Brackensee librarian Megan Beard, who has offered support from our local library in our efforts. I've got the liability forms from the city, which anyone, including Bellflower, Lost Flores or Somerset, uh, Somerset students, uh, can fill out and submit to participate in this service project. Again, if you're interested in helping out with this service project, please reach out to, to myself. And in closing of this personal portion of my, uh, update, I'd like to share some college news. Students in our district have begun receiving their first college acceptances. While it's going, it's gonna be a long time before we hear, uh, from all the colleges we've applied to, I'd like to congratulate everyone who's been seeing their hard work pay off, but I'm gonna be a little honest here. Cal State Long Beach did not take me, uh, and I was pretty bummed out about that. I worried that, uh, what that meant for my UC applications, but I reminded myself that there are so many other options available to me, like the free tuition I could receive at LBCC and through those colleges. So my message to students is, it's okay if your college plans don't work out, there's still time to hear back from the other colleges you've applied to. And if you keep facing rejection, just know that here in Bellflower, there's always somewhere for you to go because of our great community college promise programs. I am delighted to report that I have received three, uh, acceptances so far, uh, with that one, uh, decline, uh, declined, um, application, two of which are from states other than California. So, uh, I'll be doing my research into the feasibility of attending these out-of-state schools, considering the availability of transgender care as I transition, the tuition rates and the styles of learning the campuses feature. So in the meanwhile, don't lose, don't lose hope, guys. You know, we still have months to go. The very last statement I'd like to use my time on is regarding Dr. Sue Elhessen's request for reasonable accommodation. So last October, my colleague made a request for reasonable accommodation in the form of time limits on board meetings so that she could better participate. The requests of individuals with disabilities are very serious and must be met. Whereas before, it would have been difficult to implement time limits on our meetings because of the limited number of those meetings already, just once a month, our increased frequency for meetings, as well as the addition of board study sessions and retreats, means reasonable accommodation must receive our attention now. In twenty sixteen, Special Advisor for International Disability Rights with the US Department of State Judith Humann wrote, "A stable, prosperous democracy succeeds when individuals can fully participate in political and public life." I believe that this Board of Education can, can and must make this statement true and I'm looking forward to hearing more from Dr. Drotti as he helps facilitate an investigation into Doc, and Dr. Elhessen's request. I am confident, confident that we can ensure individuals can fully participate in political and public life by meeting my colleague's request while preserving and strengthening our time with the interaction and interaction with the people who elected us. So that's about it for me tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Bar Member Mendoza. Ms. Armstrong?
I need to, uh, step up my game and start typing out my notes. You know, I still write, so I, I left my notes at home because I ran from work to get here at, at four o'clock. Uh, but anyway, um, um, I, I, I'm happy our teachers are, are happy and that happiness is gonna transfer to our students and, um, and, and just circle around through our staff. So I am happy about that. I am getting over yet another cold. And, um, and that's gonna be it for me.
Thank you, Bar Member Armstrong. Dr. Elhessen?
Thank you. I, um, I attended a CSBA, uh, webinar training on trauma-based education. So I also did some research and in twenty twenty-one, the CDC saw an increase of mental health challenges across the board. But one official said that girls in the US are engulfed in a growing wave of sadness, violence and trauma. Nearly three in five teen girls reported feeling persistent sadness, hopelessness doubled the rate of boys. Twenty-five percent of girls reported having made a suicide attempt and fourteen percent reported having forced to have sex and four percent rise since that last survey. Once, once more, twenty-two percent of teenagers that are, that identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual or questioning have attempted suicide in the past year. One of the hypotheses is that girls were more like socially isolated and rely more on their peers for self-confidence, for self-esteem or just their general well-being. And they also have been and have more likely to actually spend more time on social media and not just spend time on it, but time that is excessive and may re, reach the threshold of making them greater risk for anxiety and depression. We really need to take a public health approach to what's happening with our young people. One of the most essential places to do that is in schools. The CDC has long said that we, we need to look at efforts to make and promote school connectedness and belongingness. And when we actually make the concerned effort and investment in those types of positive youth development approaches, we actually see improvements in schools' connectedness and impact on youth mental health. In the, in the webinar, I bring this as a background, but I really appreciate the fact that they bring into issue a policy stakeholders and the formation of, uh, our policies that support student well-being. Unions and districts across the country are working together to address epidemic of trauma in schools with students and educators' needs in mind. They are collaborating to transform schools into trauma-informed or trauma-sensitive environments, taking deliberate steps to make safe havens for every student and safe working environments for every educator. And I bring this to light because of what we're doing in regards to our wellness, um, centers that we're putting across the site. It's one step forward for a very critical need that's happening, not only in our local sites in Southern California area, but also across the nation. And I look forward to writing policy that would support our students' well-being and growth as we're moving forward. That would be stakeholder-based, which should include our teachers and other administrators. So with that, I say, um, we continue to take our, our heart, heartfelt interest of our students and our teachers as we move forward. I wanted to acknowledge and thank our Student Board Member, Christopher Mendoza, um, and I appreciate your feedback as we're moving forward. And the most important thing is creating a space for, um, people with disabilities. And I'm hoping that as I transition from the board, that we would have students with disabilities who would want to be part of that too. And that's part of the inclusiveness of, of building, um, a bridge and an open space for everyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elhessen. Ms. Stewart?
Good evening. Um, last week, I don't have a lot to talk about tonight, but last week I visited Ernie Pile and that was really special to me because that was the elementary school that I attended. I met with Principal Cummings. She gave me a tour of their campus and classrooms. I loved how neat and organized their classrooms and their, um, campus was. They have new backpack racks, which don't seem like very important, but the kids really loved them and it makes it look so amazing. So I really wanted to speak on that. I was able to see a lot of different grade levels. I was visiting during lunchtime, so when I went in, I was able to see that process. I love how they have the tables so spread apart for the kids, um, you know, with COVID and things like that. So I really appreciated how that went. I saw the location of their Future Wellness Center and it's beautiful. It's big, it's just gonna be amazing. So I was really excited to see that space. Um, I saw a small group intervention and instruction and I saw that happening. And I love seeing that because we know that that helps our students academically. So that was really nice to see. I visited the library. It's, I think it's one of the most beautiful libraries I've seen in our district. It was just so many books. There's so many great areas and so I really loved that. And overall, I just, I saw a lot of really good things happening there. One thing that I did have that was a little bit of a concern that I would like to talk about is in between our, um, in between the elementary school, there's a mobile home park and there's a fence where it's just completely open and you can just see right through it. And so the people from the mobile park can see our kids, our kids can see what's happening over there. So I just, I hope that in the future, that's something that we can look at and maybe consider putting slats up along that fence or some type of mesh wiring so that our kids can't see what's happening in there and they can't see our kids. So that was just one. or some type of mesh wiring so that our kids can't see what's happening in there and they can't see our kids. So that was just one thing I wanted to point out. Um, I spoke with my citizens task force representative, Nicole Gates. We discussed, discussed the new textbook adoption reviews. Um, I was a little disappointed, we haven't adopted history books and, uh, new textbooks in twenty years, which I believe is not in the best interests of our students. So I'm really excited to see that we're looking at that, we're analyzing that and I look forward to board updates and other possible adoptions in the future. I also took a time to look at all of the board policies that we have. I went through every single policy. It took me many, many hours. But a lot of these policies are outdated. Most go back to two thousand and thirteen. So I hope that we as a board can work together to look at some of these, to update some of these in the future. I also think it would be a great idea to have our student committees, um, I was talking with Board Member Mendoza about this and just maybe having them look at some of our student bylaws, which are all the five thousands, if you look at all the policies. Um, I just believe that if the students were part of that process, that they can create change that will be beneficial to their educational experience. They're there, they're doing it, and I think that they would respect those policies if they have a voice behind them and they're partners with us in the future. So I would love to look at our policies and talk with the board about that. And, um, that was really it for me. And again, I'm gonna speak on it more in the future, but I'm definitely happy for our teachers and I'm really excited that you guys are being valued and you guys are amazing. So thank you again for everything that you do and I look forward to seeing our CSCA members and our administrators in the future get what they deserve. Thank you.
Board Member Critchfield?
Uh, first of all, uh, I just echo what Amy said. Uh, it, it is really, uh, a bright day in BUSD and seeing our teachers and our classified and everybody. Um, I have a, a immense, uh, feeling of optimism for our district and I could see things happening, uh, on a, a micro and a macro and also thanks to, um, Dr. Drotti and, uh, how those negotiations went and how they're playing out. I just, uh, I really appreciate everyone, uh, collaborating in a way that's really going to help students in the long run. Um, as far as events go, I did go to the Lakewood Business, uh, Safety Roundtable. Uh, and thank you again for the presentation on safety. I'm, I'm very encouraged that more and more at our meetings, we're talking about school safety and student performance like we should and I, I feel, uh, that time being much more well-spent talking about those things. Um, I also went to a ribbon cutting in Bellflower because I, I do believe in the partnership between local businesses, uh, uh, our city partners and our school district. And also today was the Lakewood State of the City, which was, uh, a great event. And I was, I was, uh, accompanied with, uh, Dr. Drotti and, uh, uh, Board President, uh, Garza, another great event. Again, building those partnerships with our cities, uh, Lakewood, Bellflower and Sridos, uh, to me is gonna be, uh, very important, uh, for years to come. And I think that there's a lot of juice in that squeeze as far as working together with those partners. Uh, and then as far as meetings go, um, we, we talked about it earlier, but, uh, Dr. Sue Alhessen and I and Dr. Drotti have been meeting with legal firms and that's been a very, uh, a good experience, uh, you know, pretty long interviews, but, uh, very, uh, fruitful and, and looking forward to reporting more on that, uh, later. Um, and let's see, I did make some notes. Um, and i- in, in general, I would say, uh, I'm very optimistic and I, I, I believe as a board, you know, even when we disagree, we're gonna, we're gonna do more and more disagreeing, uh, with, uh, earned mutual respect. And I believe that to make progress, we're gonna continue to work as a team and utilize our collective strengths and also find creative solutions to the challenges we face. Um, and I believe as a board, we're going to continue to set an example of collaboration and engaging and open dialogue, uh, so we can work towards providing our district with a supportive and respectful and inclusive learning environment for all of our students. Uh, as things come up, um, I'm, again, very optimistic that we as a board will work together and, uh, it'll be for the benefit of our entire district and especially our students. So thank you again for coming tonight and thank you to my board for continuing to work together.
Thank you, Board Member Critchfield. Uh, so for my, on my end, um, I was able to participate uh, as part of a, as a judging committee for the Noonday Lions. They give out, uh, scholarships to our students. The night that I attended, um, they were giving scholarships to our Somerset, uh, students. Very, uh, much excited for them, um, as they go forward in their educational, um, you know, meeting these last educational, um, expectations and that they will be able to go, you know, um, go out there and have this support from our community. Just like a board member Critchfield said, it's really important that we continue to keep these lines of communication open with our community because they do so much for our kids at this point, um, and in, in the future. We hope that we can also be, you know, having those types of partnerships with all of our community partners. So next, I also wanna congratulate our teachers union. Thank you so much for working with us. Um, our administrative staff, Superintendent, um, Drotti, thank you. It was, um, I know that the first time that I've, since I've been on the board, that it was a really, um, good process as far as what you reported back. So I'm really hopeful that this will now be the normal for our district. And I hope to hear, you know, really good information, um, you know, come back to us from CSCA in the future as well. Noonday, um, I'm sorry. So also, uh, was able to attend Lakewood City, State of the City today with, um, my fellow board member, um, Critchfield, uh, Doc, Superintendent Dr. Drotti. Uh, it, and the staff as well. Um, it was really fun seeing, you know, all those different people in one room and being able to make those connections for our communities and for our, our school communities and also presenting, you know, introducing Dr. Drotti to the larger, you know, um, elected community itself. We hope that in the future, we can continue to build those, you know, uh, relationships so that way we can bring, you know, excellence to our schools and our students. Now, um, I also wanted to address, um, a newspaper article that was out in, over the, um, weekend was released. Um, I'd like to start by my, uh, with my, my comments this evening with something that we teach in our Garza family and that is finding opportunity in challenges. As most of you may know, there was a news article published this weekend in the Long Beach Post-Telegram that questioned our boards and districts inclusiveness and students and members of our community with disabilities. As part of our board, I think that it's important that our position and perspective be shared with everyone. In the short time since December for, for this new school board, um, we have without question shown a willingness and commitment to address issues in our schools that confront our students and staff that have long been neglected. The fact is that the issue raised in the news article are not new. The state of our boardroom and its accessibility is not new. We in fact have members of the school board here with us tonight who have been members of the school board's governance for years, yet never brought this issues up for remediation or consideration ever. The question to ask ourselves is why is this now an issue? The unquestioned fact is these members and those in past boards unfortunately neglected and these, and did not address them. I for one, won't delve in the past as no one here can change the past, but we can do something going forward and I ask that we all do so. In very quick fashion, we have started this process by changing our board meeting schedule from one meeting a month to two meetings a month in order to shorten the amount of time our board meetings. And this is just our start. I have no doubt that we will get to a place where our district, after a comprehensive review on all, overall accessibility, will be an example and beacon to others. In the meantime, we will continue to do what we've always done and that is to ensure everyone in our community, no matter their limitations, background, experience, barriers, language, culture and beliefs to name some, is provided a platform, an opportunity to participate in our school district deliberations and considerations. Throughout my short time as president of this board, we have done that and will continue to. I ask for everyone's patience as these efforts always take time and I expect they may require funding as well. But we all know they will be worth it. Through this current challenge, I have no doubt it will lead us towards the opportunity of coming out of it a better, stronger and unified community for all. Thank you. So if there is no objection, this meeting is now adjourned at seven thirty-four until the regular board meeting to be held Thursday, March ninth.